The Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at 7:04. Secretary, please call role.
Kendra Barberina is here. Donna Sobolski.
Here.
Jim Harb.
Here.
John Idzel.
Here.
Bob Dorshovitz is excused. Keith Postel is excused. Bill Pratt.
Here. Thank you. And we have the approval of this evening's agenda. I have no changes or additions. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve as the agenda is submitted.
Support.
Booed by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve this evening's agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we have the minutes of our last meeting of February 21st.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve as submitted.
Support.
Booed by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the minutes as submitted for February 21st. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we have a public hearing, but before we move into this item, is there anyone here that wishes to speak for, to any non-agenda items? So if you're here for Verona Park, or the Beck Road Hotel, or our ordinance amendment, other than those, they'll be having your own opportunity to speak. Any other, anybody else here that wishes to speak to something that is not on the agenda? Okay. So with that, we'll cover the Verona Park development and Ms. Howley, your report.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm just gonna pull up one page of the site plan here. All right. The application before you this evening is for a cluster housing option for 15 detached single-family homes. This is at the northwest corner of Edinburgh and Beck Road, and the site is approximately five acres. As you recall, the cluster housing option is a four-step process, and it begins tonight with the planning commission's review of the option and a public hearing, and then that recommendation is sent to the Board of Trustees. If the Board of Trustees approves the option, then the applicant has 18 months to develop and finalize their site plan and to submit the associated legal documents that will ultimately be reviewed again by the Board of Trustees. So it's a four-step process, and right now we are at stage one of that. And also, I'd just like to note that this project was previously under an application for Edinburgh Estates for the rezoning to the R1S Single Family Residential District. The project name now is Verona Park going forward, but it is the same parcel. So in evaluating a cluster housing option, there's five different principles that the zoning ordinance demands that we review. Those are conformity with the spirit and the intent of the cluster housing option, vehicular circulation, design compatibility, nuisances to existing surrounding uses, and the impact on public services. I'm gonna go right to the recommendation, and then I'll walk through some of the outstanding The recommendation tonight is that we proceed with a public hearing, we take any comments from the public, and that the planning commission provides direction to the applicant on these outstanding items that are listed in the planner's report. If the direction of the planning commission leads to changes in site layout that are significant, then we recommend that the planning commission postpone the cluster housing option so that you can see those revised changes. If the direction from the planning commission doesn't lead to significant changes, just minor adjustments to the site plan and you're comfortable with that, then the recommendation would be to send it to the Board of Trustees for their consideration contingent on those changes being made. So in terms of the outstanding items for consideration, the first is listed on the bottom of Page Two in that the site plan should be revised to reduce the number of residential units. And this language was included because the true buildable portion of the parcel would limit the number of residential units to 13. So this is two less than what they're proposing. The applicant, because the right-of-way is less than 86 feet, they can count that area. So when you count that area, they, they have the possibility of building 15 units, but it's not, it's not really considered buildable area for intents and purposes. So it's important to look at both. The second recommendation is that some additional details on the amount of vegetation to be removed versus saved from the site would be provided, especially along the western property line here. There is a significant amount of vegetation, but it's hard to ascertain the value of, of this area, its environmental value, without knowing kind of where we're starting. So the recommendation is that further details regarding the existing vegetation and replacement would be provided. The applicant did note that approximately 120 regulated trees would be removed, just from their own preliminary calculations, but I'd like to see some exact figures so we, we have a solid understanding of where we're coming from. The third condition is that greater consideration should be given to creating a programmable green open space amenity on the site. And one of the zoning ordinance standards for design compatibility for this cluster housing option is that the project would have open recreational space. And this comment and some of the following comments on the bottom of Page Four are, are the result of the proposed layout of the site in that if you are a resident who's living in this subdivision, that you drive in, there's one way, you park your vehicle, and there's no opportunity for interaction, there's no opportunity to take a walk in the evening, take your dog for a walk, to let your kid ride their bike. And I understand that this is a target market that the applicant is, is looking for, for the, for the potential home buyers of, of these units. But even a aging-in-place, empty nester, senior demographic likes to have the ability to move around in their neighborhood, and I think there's something that is quite lost without that aspect. That ties into the fourth recommendation, that, that greater consideration should be given to providing a sidewalk around at least the court, and I think there's an opportunity where a sidewalk loop could be created. Obviously, there's nowhere to go at the moment along Beck Road, but if there were an internal loop that residents would have access to, that could be quite nice. The fifth outstanding item is that the commission's determination on some reduced setbacks is needed for the project to move forward. So in terms of side and rear setbacks, the minimum setback is 50 feet, and the applicant is requesting 45 and 49 feet. Justification should be provided to the commission for this reduction. And then additionally, in the front yard, 42 feet is required as the front yard setback, and the applicant is proposing 25. And I'm comfortable with a recommending a 25-foot front yard setback, provided that there's some additional character to the neighborhood that improves it, other than just clustering homes closely together, because that's what this results in. So on the top of Page Five of the planner's report, there are several considerations that would help achieve this neighborhood character for the front yard setback, and that includes a usable front porch, a recessed garage, and some stronger architectural features. And there's four different elements that recommending be noted on the plan. Those don't have to be ironed out today, the facade details, that can come with site plan approval later on in the process, but if it's something that the planning commission is looking for, and, and what we're recommending, then these notes would be added onto the Also in this category would be the incorporation of some street trees along that internal drive, Verona Court. The 10th outstanding item is that it's recommended that there be some cleaning of the existing vegetation along the property lines, and that there's an opportunity for some infill vegetation. And there's also an opportunity, it appears from the site plan, that along this northern property line where the berm is, to extend that a bit. One of the concerns that was raised in the rezoning public hearing was the resident to the north here was worried about their views, and this will be a lot of units that they will be facing. So a berm more densely infilled could be helpful. Those are the 11 outstanding items that are raised in the planner's report, and as I mentioned before, if, if you feel these items can be resolved to your satisfaction tonight, then there's no question that this could, could go forward to the Board of Trustees. But I suspect that if the commission would like to see some major modifications to the site plan, that you might be more comfortable seeing the revised plan again before it goes to the Board. But that's up to your pleasure. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we have the engineering report.
Thank you, Commissioners. Dave Richman from Spalding Decker. We have reviewed the cluster housing option for Verona Park prepared by Seaver Keast Engineering, dated February 26, 2018, and received in our office March 5. With your approval, I'm gonna go right to the recommendation. Based on the availability of existing utilities around the site, it appears the subject project can be designed to meet the engineering requirements of Plymouth Township. Therefore, we recommend approval of the cluster housing option. I'll be available to answer any questions that you may have regarding engineering.
Okay. Thank you very much. And the applicant's received a report from the fire department, and they have found no deficiencies from a public safety perspective. And the applicant is here. Do you want to step forward, and do you have a presentation to show us?
Thank you. My name is Jack Carnahan. I'm here on behalf of Centennial Home Group, developer. As you may recall, in the last, last fall, when we were applying for rezoning, we came before this board and subsequently before the township board and said we would make some significant and major changes to what had been one-time Edinburgh Estates. Part of the reason we changed the name, to emphasize the separation and the difference. We said we would put a road out to Beck Road that lines up with Gulfview Lane, and that's what we've done. We said we would have 15 units, that's what we've done. We said we would do everything to avoid Edinburgh and interaction with Edinburgh, and that's what we've done as well. We've, we've moved ahead, we've studied and tried to come up with a plan that would work. We said also we would pattern this, if you will, after the homes in one of the subdivisions up near the corner of North Territorial and Beck on the east side, and the other one at the west end of this project. So we, we've done that as well. I have a handout I'd like to provide everyone. Let me just say one thing. We're here not for a site plan approval, and many of the items we've been asking for are for site plan approval, and that's one of the reasons we didn't submit a certain drawing. I have a preliminary landscape plan. It is preliminary. It has 16 street trees shown. It has a lot of vegetation proposed to be added, both on the north, the west, and the south. It shows proposing leaving a large buffer along Edinburgh Street so that if you drive down there, you basically won't even know we're there, which was always one of the concerns of the homeowners that accessed their properties off of Edinburgh. We feel we've done a, enough of a study to know that these homes are gonna be outstanding. I've had a, the architect prepare a rendering of one of the homes. They will not all be exactly the same. They will all be patterned, if you will, after each other so they blend. I will not have a red brick next to a black brick next to a white brick house. They will all be patterned. There will be mixes of stone on those. Some people will want stone, some people won't. We're planning to have each home look different, so when you drive in to visit one of your friends or neighbors, you will know exactly what's happening. Now, if it's okay, I will hand this out.
Sure.
And then I'll go through this briefly. There's four plans, a couple of houses, a little colored drawing, it's a rendering and a landscape plan. I will paraphrase and read some of this as well. This site is small. As the planner indicated, it's less than five acres. We want it to be an exclusive upscale enclave of 15 homes. These home designs are expected to be of interest to those wishing to downsize, empty nesters, residents who want to stay for part of the year, the home snowbirds. The type of home, floor plan, the layout is all designed with that intent. Each home will have a different facade with varying mixes of brick and stone. The homes will be designed and planned to blend together, offer coordinated and aesthetically pleasing community appearance. They will not all be identical, but they will appear to have been selected to fit together. Placement of the homes and the footprint of these is designed to keep the hard surfacing as minimal as possible. Placement of the garages and walks allows two guest vehicles in each driveway, along with on-street parking allowed on one side of the street. That was an issue that was raised by the fire review, and we accommodated that, and we're glad to do that. Each home will have a rear exterior deck space to be configured by the homeowner within the limits available, and then the interiors of the homes will be customizable for the desired number of rooms and features. Some people will want extra room upstairs, others may not, may want it to leave it in a loft form. That's up to them. Somebody may want an office, others may want that as a bedroom for grandkids or visitors. Our intent is to construct a project that's desirable, marketable, and timeless, and after, after research, we feel that the home type being offered is the best product for this area and site. Now, the total number of trees proposed to be removed, and it's gonna be roughly about 120, will be replaced with even more on this site. Our selective choices will be designed by a landscape architect and will enhance the surrounding area as well as our homes. Screening will be created to improve what exists now, both to the north, to the west, and a little bit to the south along Edinburgh Drive. And it's one of the rough design points, a lot of lanes getting here, even some here, some here, and a lot here. And build this again, most likely, nothing is crossed about, it's fairly severe, there's so much growth and vegetation. Part of our goal is to keep that in that form. In addition, street trees will be provided, as I've already said, for each site. Now, the ponds themselves will have extensive landscaping. Part of that is to provide a buffer to Beck Road, and the other part is because Wayne County requires it, and that's who has ultimate jurisdiction on the drainage. So as you can see, the project is intentionally designed to avoid Edinburgh Street in its entirety. Existing vegetation and trees will not be removed, but will be enhanced with additional plannings, as indicated. What we're requesting is cluster housing option approval, a recommendation, for 15 homes, which will allow this project to proceed. Our intent has been all along to construct this project early this summer, and to do that, we need to move ahead with this approval, and then with site plan approval to follow as quickly as possible. We want to build that in 2018. We have a really good house plan that's extremely desirable, and we think that with what we're planning to do and what we can show you in detail at the site plan stage, we have colored renderings, there's a small markup of a colored drawing in that package for the landscape, you will see just how important and how attractive a feature like this is gonna be. I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay. I have a question for the planner, the very, very first thing. Well, I have two questions for you, Ms. Howley. So in your report, you mention on this particular zoning that it calls for a maximum number of 13 units. Am I interpreting that correct?
It is. That is based on the buildable square footage, though. So if we incorporate the right-of-way, which we can do because it's less than 86 feet, then the end result is 15 units.
So he can do 15?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so...
That would be the maximum that would be permitted under the cluster housing option.
Okay. And what was the other issue? So of many of these items, you know, our, you know, to me, our site plan kind of a discussion that we would have, do we need to resolve every one of those issues today if we opted to approve this, to send it to the Board of Trustees, or can we get into a more in-depth discussion when he does come forward for a site plan? I'm not quite sure what, how to gauge the discussion for tonight.
Sure. I think that there are some elements that are, there are some outstanding items that are leaning towards site plan approval, review. But the, I think we have to ask ourselves, the point of the stage in the process is to determine kind of that basic layout and what the character of this will be. So for this evening, I think the most important things would be, are you comfortable as a commission with the number of units proposed? Are you comfortable with the detention basin being the only amenity on the site? And are you comfortable with a reduction in the rear and the side yard setbacks, but also the requested reduction in front yard setbacks at this point? And it sounds like from the letter that the applicant just proposed, that some of these items that are mentioned in the planner, planning report are moot at this point, such as the street trees. And that may, that may very well be an easy check that we can cross off, but it also seems then that, based on the letter that was just read, that the applicant should have no qualms with adding some of the notes that are recommended in, in this report, such as the referencing the architectural standards, and that would carry through, through to the site plan. And this is something that we have required in other developments. Most recently, that was noted as part of the cluster housing approval for The Woods with Jeff O'Brien and Walter Menard.
Okay. So why are you requesting or, you know, planning for a reduction in those setbacks that she had just mentioned?
We're trying to keep the footprints as small as possible and trying not to push these homes any closer to the property line than we already have them. And as Laura said, you've just got two basic homes that are closer than the minimum. You start making those driveways longer. We feel the driveway's long enough to park two cars for guests, plus there's on-street parking on one side, so we feel it'll be adequate. I also don't see this as party central. We're gonna need a lot of vehicles to park. It looks to be adequate room. That's part of the reason.
You know, more recent cluster housing options that we've gone forward, there have been more amenities for the residents that are there to build some sense of community within that particular development. Since they're really not tied into a larger subdivision, we just did one a month ago where they had, you know, similar to what you had, a little island, and they put a little gazebo there. And there are other similar cluster housing that we've approved where they, they have a boulevard somewhere, and they have some sidewalks going through, and, and again, a gazebo where residents can have a neighborhood, I want, block party or cookout, and that kind of thing. I don't really see anything like that, and the detention pond is required, so what's your solution?
There is room to do some enhancement around the retention pond with areas for seeding and so forth. I personally don't like the gazebos. They occasionally do get vandalized, and then there's the constant upkeep with those. I've rarely seen them actually be used for anything. They're pretty, and then about six months later, they're not very attractive in general. That's, that's been my personal experience with several that we've constructed over the years. I'd rather address, have my landscape planner address pathways and walks and some seeding areas and so forth around the, around the pond area, and maybe a walk, walking path of some kind to get there. You can certainly do that at the site plan stage.
Walking path would be a good approach, you know, hopefully it would not take down additional trees, because it is a pretty site. We wouldn't want to destroy that. Commissioners, do you have questions, comments concerned? Okay. At this end, anything at this point? Maybe we'll open the public hearing then? So let's open the public hearing at 7:30. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this issue? Yeah, come on forward. Normally, keep this to about three minutes or so.
Okay. Question.
Okay.
I'm Robert Harris, 12471 Willoway Court. I'm president of homeowners for Heather Hills, which are we at homes on the south side and on the west side that are affected by this development? Since it went from Edinburgh Estates, Edinburgh Estates, to Verona Place or Park, we're not as directly affected, right? Because they're coming out of Beck Road now, et cetera. But Jack and Stefano are keeping, out of courtesy, keeping us involved. I sent the, the elevations and the plan views out to, and the letter from the planning people, to all the homes in our area, 106. I got four comments. Two were not related. Two were, one was, they look small. Number two was, no disrespect, Laura, but the comment about, we need a porch there because, because of people doing lingering hellos and goodbyes, and one lady thought it came out of a Jane Austen Penguin classic paperback. So frankly, there are, we all have porches in our, in ourself, both the condos, the site condos, and our homes, and I never see anybody reading a Sunday paper on the porch. So if their architect says it cheapens the look or the value, or both, I've gotta go along with their architect. So there weren't any issues with the, the elevation, et cetera. There were two other comments, and they were both related to golf course and concerns that if the, if the golf cor, if the green space is minimized, it's gonna devalue our homes, because we're directly, we're right in the area, so. But that wasn't related to Verona. So those are my comments. We got some residents here. Joe, did you have anything in mind?
Well, if you have, you have to come up to the podium and give us your name. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sure.
My question was...
You have to come up to the mic. No, you come up to the mic because it's being recorded and we... No, you come up to the mic because it's being recorded and we, you know, we can't get the...
Fred Rattelli over in Heather Hills.
Okay.
I was looking at the preliminary site plan there. I was just concerned about the shielding at the north side of the property there and the west side. Apparently, the gentleman here has said that there were going to be some updates to that to, to that concern, you know, to give the residents here on the west side more shielding to the property and the north side. I know at one meeting that one gentleman who lived up in that northern's home there was really concerned about the overlook of the plant. That's all I have.
Okay. Thanks for coming up. Anyone else? Okay. If the applicant would come forward, back again, and compliment you, I, I know you've met with the homeowners association. We've encouraged you to do that. That's always a, a good thing. We want everyone to get on board and make sure everything is understood in a more informal setting. So thank you for doing that. So comments again from the commission?
I have a question.
Oh, yeah. Close the public hearing. Forgot about that. Close the public hearing at seven thirty-five. Okay, Chuck.
Oh, why not a sidewalk, at least on one side of the street?
If it's a small area, you put a sidewalk in, you start pushing the homes closer out from all, in all the directions, wherever you put the sidewalk. And also, with a total of fifteen homes, I don't see anybody not being able to walk in the street. If they want to walk down to, say there's a pathway out and around the retention ponds area, they want to walk down to the mailboxes, which we're planning to have near the entry. It's not high speed. It's just less hard surface. It's just less imposing and takes up less room on this relatively small site. We're trying to keep it compacted in. If, if the sidewalk is ultimately the one deciding factor, we would certainly consider it. I just, normally you put that sidewalk probably two feet to the edge off the pavement, minimum, and then five-foot walk. And the driveways, you're adding seven feet. And you see the homes along the north side all get pushed seven feet to the north, and that then starts the fact of vegetation that's there, as well as pushing them closer to the property to the north. We just didn't see as a need for a, for a separate sidewalk in this case. The road is very wide. The road's a thirty-foot wide road, so they're adequate.
Right. You mentioned a walking path. With this, with this compact, because the placement of those homes are, where do you get, other than the front corner, where do you get room to have a walking path come?
That's where we would, we would do. I was trying to stay away from all the preserved woodland area along Edinburgh, and we would put it somewhere from the street, Verona Court, going up and around in some fashion retention ponds.
Is it around that? It's hard for me to tell when I drive down Beck, but where that pond is going to be, is there a lot of woods right in that area?
Not necessarily. It's, it's heavier wooded further west of the site than that northeast corner.
So would it be possible to put a walking path? I don't know if it would be able to be encircle the, the pond, because we don't want to adversely impact the neighbor that's to the north. But that's something you may want to consider. There needs to be some kind of amenity there. Are you putting in a sidewalk along Beck?
Yes, we are. That's indicated on the drawing.
Yeah, I couldn't, I thought it was.
That'd be to the north.
Yeah, I wanted to verify that.
We'll do that.
So, cluster housing option asks for green space, and what you're providing us is, is your drainage ditch as green space. So I, I don't understand why you would, I understand the economic situation, why you're forcing fifteen homes on this property, but you're not providing green space like the cluster housing option, option anticipates in the zoning ordinance.
I'm not sure what ditch you're talking about.
I'm talking about your pond.
The pond is a very green space, if you will. It's required extensive plantings, and it's very gentle side slopes, and then we're also preserving probably a quarter and a half.
So, so you're considering the pond an amenity for your...
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I, I disagree with that to- totally. It's a requirement, not an amenity.
It's definitely a requirement. There, I, we're not arguing that, but it's going to be a very attractive feature because of the requirements.
So what would happen if you took two houses out of here?
I don't really, I don't really know the answer to that. I, we had talked, from the time we started this project last fall, of providing fifteen homes on this site, and that's what we're proposing. I don't really have an answer.
I think you need one.
Commissioner Harv, do you have anything at this point? Or do you want us, we can circle back?
No, other than what, I think I would echo what Bill said in terms of Commissioner Pratt, in terms of, were there two, two units less that would be additional green space? I mean, that, that there's no, no way around that. I mean, and when I, when I read the planner's, Laura's report initially, it referenced that, that, pretty much that two units had to go. So now that, that seems to have changed, given the easement situation, and I'm not sure how that sets. Again, with, with the cluster option, that is one of the benefits of us giving a higher density is to, to retain more green space, and I don't think we're doing that here. So that's my two cents.
Laura, what is the chronology of the number of units in the beginning when first presented? Was it, did it start at fifteen?
It did. That was, that was what the applicant had discussed during the zoning process. And as a zoning, as a rezoning to the Arwinas District, there was no site plan or concept tied to that, though. It was just a rezoning. And similar to the process that took place for Walt Menard's project with Tuscany, and kind of looking at, I believe nine units initially were proposed, eight or nine, and then it went down to six or seven through the process. That, that rezoning is not a given. There's no contract entered with that to say that this, you will be able to achieve the maximum number of units. That decision happens where we are today with the cluster housing option, as we evaluate, how does this really fit on the site? Can we fit the stormwater? Can we fit these amenities? How do we handle parking? All those items come into play that aren't considered at the time of a rezoning.
What are your thoughts on, on these setbacks where the applicant, one of his rationale for the setback is to preserve more of the buffering area?
I agree with that. By having a larger front yard setback, it's just going to implode that whole road, right? And that is something that we have heard from adjacent homeowners, that they, they want to see the maximum buffer that we can on the site. And that's understandable. But at the same time, the, the result is that you have fifteen homes that are very close together, and if there's not true architectural differ- diffraction between them, if there's not some sort of other amenity on the site, then it just looks like you have a row of the same housing very close together. And I think that even if one unit were to be removed from the site plan, there would be an opportunity for at least a walking path that would not be around the detention basin. I think, in my experience anyway, walking around in Northville Township neighborhoods where I live, there's a lot of detention basins in residential developments, but when you walk through those, sometimes they attract a lot of geese and ducks, and it's not the most pleasant area to really be right next to. I think that if there were a, kind of a meandering path, loop that went around the neighborhood, maybe with a sidewalk on one side of Verona Court, even if that sidewalk were directly against the road, you see these sometimes in more rural residential developments, that five-foot right adjacent to the road, that might be appropriate treatment here. But I'd also like to invite the commission to, to think about the last time that you were in Heinz Drive or another nature trail in Michigan, and there's definitely a way that, that we can engineer those, you know, five or six-foot paths to cut through a very densely wooded area without impacting the entire vegetation. And I, I don't think that such a, such a path in this area would be, you know, invasive to the existing vegetation or detract from that. I think it would be better if it coexisted and was kind of embedded in it.
Yeah, I think if, if you did lose one unit, it would be, it would give your development a more open feeling, and one could appreciate the, the natural beauty that you are trying to preserve there. It serves two functions. It's the marketability of the, of, of your development, but also provides good buffering for the neighbors that surround that develop, your development.
Are you ask, let me ask you a question. Are you asking to like just eliminate unit one, leave the others where they are, or try and spread everything else out over whatever land is gained if one is eliminated?
I think, well, I'm speaking for myself, and then others can chime in, you know? Remove one unit, I really don't care which unit it is, but to spread the units a little further apart. With that, I'll throw the floor open to anyone that wants to comment on that.
But when you look at, when you look at the, between unit thirteen and fourteen, it appears that there's ten feet between the two units. When you, if you were to reduce the development by one or two, the, you're, it's, it's a nice unit, so why would you want to be so close to each other? I mean, it just seems to be, that's, again, part of the cluster option, is that you have some green space, and I, it just seems like everything is very tight in there. That's just my, 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 my observation.
Yeah, I would agree with that. As I said earlier, I, I think you, you need to take a look at your, at your engineering on this thing and give the township a, a development that the option you're asking for actually, it coincides with that, with the, with the zoning ordinance's spirit, and, so I, I think that's, that's what you got to look at. That's my opinion.
But also, a little off topic, but on the, on the pond, I would suggest you put a spray in there. We've done that with the other two cluster housing approvals that we just did. It helps keep the bugs down and everything else for the folks that live near that area.
Area.
Yeah, an area there. So, Laura, so at this point, we make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees, do we have, do we designate the number of units that we would recommend for approval?
Yes.
That's what I thought. And I can tell you that, as had been referenced earlier, the, one of the cluster housing units that we approved a few months ago, the Board of Trustees reduced it even further. So the member that represents them on this commission is not here tonight, but I think he would bring that issue up, on their feelings about having the closeness of these units. So Laura, if we were to recommend approval of this to the Board of Trustees this evening, we would indicate the number of units that we would recommend for approval?
Yes.
And what other items should be included in that, without touching on the site plan issues?
The recommendation would include the planning commission's waiver for the reduced setbacks for the rear, side, and front. The recommendation would...
Don't you think that would change if we reduced the number of units?
It might impact one of the side and the rear setbacks potentially, but I think the applicant would still probably keep the twenty-five-foot front yard. I think that's something they really want to try for with this project. But it might impact the others. But at least with the, by the planning commission saying they recommended that reduction, then if it did change, it would be a moot point.
Well, I would, I mean, from my perspective, I, I guess I don't have much of a problem with the twenty-five foot on the front, but it, and so I think the others should be held in abeyance to see what the, the developer comes up with, based on the number of units we decide to recommend to the, to the, to the Board of Trustees. I, I don't see approving or not approving the rest of it, because they could change dramatically, given his new design.
Should we, it might be better to postpone until we see him come up with a new site, you know, plan here, so we know how those setbacks would be.
I agree.
I, I mean, I don't have a problem with the, with the front or the back, because it results in greater buffering for the adjacent neighbors. But I think the setbacks between the houses is an issue. I don't know if others agree with me. You can chime in.
Yeah, I don't think that this application is ready to go to the Board of Trustees. We haven't seen how the township is getting something back for the greater density that the applicant is receiving. We don't know what it'll look like with one fewer, with one less home, or two, if it has to go to two. I don't think it's ready to go to the Board of Trustees. I think we should postpone it.
I'm, I'm okay with that. I know you have a deadline that you'd like to get going on.
Is this, a tabling is postponement? Is that...
Yeah, same as table. Well, a tabling means that we would table it and bring it up at that same meeting. A postponement means we'll bring it up at another meeting. And that's, when that meeting is, is up to you, when you think you could have something together.
So once we request with revised plan that you're asking for, it would be considered again or brought up without delay?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. And so if, if you were taking a look at this, what would you say is a reasonable time for you to look at it and, and reconfigure it?
It won't take long, because we're in a hurry. I would hope to have something in two weeks or less.
Okay. So, and then what, what, what we're looking for is outside limitations. That doesn't, just because we set an outside limitation, doesn't mean you can't come back earlier. But we do like to set outside limitations so that, so that doesn't constrain you if you run into a problem.
We, we often say up to three months or something, but you're free to come in whenever you're ready to come in.
That's, that's fine, if that's the wishes of this board, then that's...
Mr. Chairman.
Wait, wait just one minute.
Oh.
Are you ready for a motion?
That's where I was heading.
Okay. And then on that, to show us what amenities, that's another issue, what amenities would you provide? We've talked about walking paths. You don't like gazebos, but I've seen around town where they have used the gazebos, but that's up to you. We're not going to design it for you, but there needs to be something that builds a sense of community for the folks that are going to be living. going to be living here.
Even benches. I mean, just something that gives us, the township and the residents, something back for the higher density.
Right.
That's basically what we're looking for. And you could come back in April. I mean, that's not... If you're ready, you know?
Yeah. And one more... Any other comments before we make the motion or Commissioner Pratt? Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we postpone PC number 2279-0218 for up to 90 days to June meeting.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barbara Rina to postpone application 2279-0218. Up to 90 days would be up to our June meeting.
June meeting, yeah.
All in favor is signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You can come back anytime.
Thank you very much for your input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're moving on to application under Old Business, 2274-0118, the Beck Road Hotel. And Ms. Hall, your report.
Are you sitting in for Ned?
Are we ready to proceed?
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay. Thank you.
We're done with our fun and forlorn.
I'm representing...
Really? Who are you representing?
Mr. Dweesh this evening, as he did come to the township this morning and requested that his application still be considered, but for postponement, but discussed so that any feedback the commission had this evening on his revised tentative site plan could be taken into consideration as he continues improving that site plan. He is out of the state at this point right now, traveling. And he and his engineer and landscape architect did meet with Dave Richmond and I and also Kevin Bennett, the township attorney, on two different occasions to discuss the site plan and the land combination of the two parcels for this PUD. And I think we did come to a informed consensus about proceeding, and this latest site plan that you have in your packet reflects some of those changes that we talked about.
Oh, so there are changes from the last...
Yes, there are changes.
I didn't even bother to look.
And most importantly, he does have a landscape architect on his team now that did provide a landscape plan. And this is... This individual has worked on other projects in the township, including St. Conant. So, they are reputable. Seeing that landscape plan for the first time, now we have something to react to as a township. So, there are outstanding items for the landscaping. I don't think they're major, but we will continue to work with them to refine them. The two major items that I did want to discuss with the planning commission tonight... Actually, it's three, I'm sorry, is... Sorry, let me rotate this. The pages aren't all the same. So, this is the back of the site here with the hotel building. And in the meeting with Dave Richmond and I, the applicant discussed the possibility of here... Can everybody see where I'm kind of circling?
Yep.
Okay. Having an outdoor patio space that would be used by the banquet facility. So, an extension of that banquet facility would come outside. It would be really nicely landscaped. It's probably the nicest view. I think Dave Richmond pointed this out, that it does overlook in this corner here is the detention pond. So, as opposed to Beck Road or, you know, a restaurant, this is probably like the nicest corner that could be greened up. But this wasn't represented on the plan. And so, he will be adding that. And I think what might be beneficial here is the elimination of some of this parking and to make this truly an outdoor space that he could use in association with his banquet facility, but also as a green space, a meeting space for those who are using the hotel. Because that would be the true amenity for this site. The other amenity is this green walking path that leads from the front of the hotel and to both restaurants. There is an outdoor patio space that's proposed here at the front of the new drive-through restaurant, and we're in favor of that. I think it's a good size, but there's no dimensions, so I want to make sure. But I did want your feedback on the outdoor patio space as he moves forward. Are you comfortable seeing something like that?
How many parking spaces do you anticipate?
Looks like about 10 spaces would be eliminated.
So, all those parking spaces from the jut-out to the jut-out would be all gone?
Yeah, there's nine here, right here. And maybe you could have a couple, but this area here is pretty slim for having some sort of outdoor space that's not just right up against a car. I mean, that would be like having...
The only thing I wonder about, and this is just thought process, is maybe retaining a couple of those back parking spaces that are closer to the rear entrance? Because you're talking about having this patio go around that corner. Is that right?
Yep.
So, a couple of those parking... Maybe even just one that might be handicap, because I don't see any handicap back in the back. And if you're going to have a banquet area, aren't you going to need handicap?
Yeah, he has provided the correct amount of handicap, 88 parking, but...
Out front, though.
But he has clustered yes in the front.
Yeah. So, I don't know. You know, it's... We're totally in the wind here, so it just seems to me that if you could add just two, start that... Start your patio down toward the end, you know, further down toward the end of the building and provide two or so spaces. I'm not sure exactly. Maybe just one handicap space right there in the corner. That might be beneficial because, I mean, you're looking for... If you're looking at banquet, you're looking at people who aren't necessarily, you know, in, you know, coming from the hotel. In fact, you're looking for people not coming from the hotel. Right?
Yeah, I think... I do think that there might be a mix if it were used more as a conference facility by some of the individuals or a training.
Well, they're going to sell it to anybody who's willing to buy it.
A baby shower.
Yeah.
I agree.
From what I understand, he doesn't have a brand to put on this hotel. Do you happen to know if he's going to have what's very common out, these complimentary breakfasts? Would he be using that same space? That would be a nice amenity for the hotel guests.
Right. I agree with you. I'm not sure if he is planning on having that complimentary breakfast, but usually, even if it's just a minimal coffee bar, almost all hotels have them, no?
Yeah. And are you envisioning something like that has been approved for the Max and Hermisite, sort of the trellis work above and that kind of thing? Or are you leaving that up to him to decide what it should look like?
I'm leaving... Yeah, I haven't recommended anything specific at this point, and it might change too on their take on that area for whatever flag is ultimately decided. But having some sort of semi enclosed, either with a fence or a brick new wall, you know, vegetated patio area would be nice.
I do like the walkway. I think that adds some safety to the whole place.
Yes.
I like that walkway myself, and I would suggest that he use some kind of decorative paving material, concrete or paving bricks or something. I think that would give it a little more of an upscale look and not just having a walkway through basically a parking lot.
Okay. This is good feedback. Thank you.
What is the... Right behind the hotel, there's a rectangle. It's dotted line. Is that a pool?
This part right here?
Right.
Or... No, I don't believe so.
Any idea what that is? Just more... That might be their ballroom or their banquet room?
I will ask for him to specify that.
Before we get further into this discussion and perhaps not to keep Dave too long, you want to comment on your engineering report or you have concerns and something we need to discuss here?
They made a few changes from our last letter. You know, there was a few items we were able to cross off. There's still some things they've got to take care of on here, mostly the legal description. I don't think closed. We all know that the parcel needs to be combined, and I think he's willing to do that. It just hasn't been done yet. There's a few more topographic information that needs to be put on there. Some of the utilities are lacking. In general, their plans are very hard to read.
Shocking.
And it's always been my experience, when I prepared plans, is you make the plans as easy as possible to read so the reviewer can't find the mistakes. Well, we have to look at it so hard to see everything, it just makes it that much more difficult for us to review the plans. Talked to them a few times about it, but it just never seems to change. The one thing Laura and I were discussing this before the meeting, Laura had concerns with the loading zone for the new restaurant, and I agree with her. I've driven some trucks before. I have no idea how a semi-driver is going to get into that 10-foot wide space with the limited area they have to maneuver. Something needs to be done about that loading zone. So, from my standpoint, that would be one concern I have. Engineering-wise, there is a regional detention area that's off the property. They're still going to have to get approval through Wayne County. They are looking to do some stormwater devices that'll... The chambers that clean the stormwater before it goes into it, so they're looking to do some of that. They do have that shown on the plans, but they are going to have to get approval from Wayne County for their stormwater. And so, they're going to have to go in there and prove that there's enough volume in that basin to accept their stormwater. If it doesn't have enough volume, they do have some room on site where they could do underground detention, but it becomes very expensive if they have to do that. It's a very tight site engineering-wise. I think they can make it happen. It's just there's going to be a lot of engineering work involved with the project, so...
Well, it is tight, and I'm concerned about, as you mentioned, the trucks and all the water detention issues.
There's going to have to be some verification that that stormwater detention basin that's off-site is large enough to handle the runoff from this site. And that's going to be Wayne County's going to make them verify it. They're not going to let them get away without verifying it. They're going to have to verify it. And we always review the calculations ourselves. You know, that's one of the things we do review. We leave it up to Wayne County for approval. But if I see an issue, I also call them and say, hey, I think there may be an issue with it as well. But they're usually a lot more stringent than I have been on some of it, so...
Where is it off-site? Is it by Home Depot or where is the...
It's down to the... It's to the southwest. It's actually to the southwest. It's not up towards Home Depot. It's not part of the Home Depot detention area. There is a... I'm not sure what building it is to the south of them, but there is some detention area back in...
And those people own that detention? I mean, who has the ownership of it?
Well, right now, the restaurant that's there, that's where they drain to. That's their ultimate drainage is to that detention area. It's right behind... Yeah, right there. It's right in that area there. And the existing stormwater runoff from that site, that's where it goes now. It heads over to that area. I believe when this whole... That whole area right in there was designed, that's what they had designed that area for, was for stormwater. I just don't know if there's going to be enough storage in there. You know, we don't know what the volume calculations were. I don't know what the old plans were. You know, I don't know what was originally there. So, part of his approval process through Wayne County is he's going to have to go in and actually survey that detention area, and they're going to have to run calculations to make sure that it can hold the volume that they're adding into it.
Laura, what about the ingress and egress from Home Depot and the joint, whatever? Home Depot has to give him the right to use that, correct?
Yes.
And has that happened or...
No, I asked him about that this morning, and he said that Leo Gonzalez is working with Home Depot to secure that. But that will have to be submitted and reviewed by Kevin Bennett.
And I think he did tell us at a previous meeting that Home Depot told him that they wouldn't want to review it until he actually has an approved plan. You know, he has to be further along, I think, in the process than where he is right now. I don't know if that still holds true or...
I mean, there might be some truth to that because, you know, without, Home Depot was taking on a cost by preparing that and allowing that to happen, so if they don't see that someone else has skin in the game, they might not be willing to walk down that path too far. And that's something that we could... I mean, his entire PUD option was... Is contingent on that access. So, if that's not secured, this entire project falls apart at the end of the day.
Could we go back to your landscape mechanicals? Your drawings?
Well, wait, before we do, are there any other engineering issues that we want to talk to Dave about? Okay, well, you can stick around or whatever you want to do. Okay. John, you had your...
I'll stick around for a few minutes.
Okay.
Could we look at that curb cut, the Home Depot curb cut, by dropping that down a bit? It's not on our...
This is as far as the site plan goes.
Right. But isn't that what we're seeing right there where your cursor is?
Yes, this is where he's proposing the location, but right above it, this Boulevard Street is owned by Home Depot, and he would have to have that access agreement approved by Home Depot, reviewed by Kevin Bennett, and then recorded.
Could we also look at that, the small drive-through restaurant to be built and where the applicant is planning on loading?
Yes, so this is one of my items this evening to discuss with you as well. So, over here on Beck Road is where we're having the majority of traffic come through the site, right? There's two access points, one to the north and then this one. And it's likely that people will be making a turn in here, especially freeway traffic. This area in here is kind of just this giant sea of pavement. This driveway width or drive aisle is... This area in here is kind of just this giant sea of pavement. This driveway width or drive aisle is, is way too large. So my recommendation, and Dave Richmond also, um, agreed with this, that this could be dropped. This green space would be bulbed out, and then it would, um, thread back to meet this so that when you're a driver coming into the site, it's not like, oh, I have this vast sea of pavement in front of me, and can I pull my car way far to the right or way far to the left? You're almost instructed to make a right-hand turn or continue going straight. You know, there aren't many options for you, and I think that will help the flow of the site. So that is one of the recommendations that Ned is working on. But then as, imagine you are a truck and you're coming in, you would need to go down this lane and then make a turn to the north, another turn here to the east, and then fit in between these two small landscape islands to your loading zone. And as this is presented, the individual would walk through a parking lot, a lawn, and then hit the sidewalk. So this does not make practical sense. But I think this whole arrangement does need further consideration because any truck, even if it's a smaller delivery truck, will just be going over all these landscape curbs and, and crushing the grass and the curb. Um, it's.
Are you saying that's where a truck is supposed to go?
Yes. Even, and the dumpster truck too, because this is the dumpster.
Because the.
Oh, man.
Cisco truck, for instance, GFS2, those are 40 footers.
Yeah. Expert drivers.
Even, even the garbage truck is gonna have a hard time accessing the dumpster back through there. It's only a 10-foot wide aisleway. It's not very wide to maneuver even a panel van in there. Right next to it.
Well, he could back, you know, he could, he could pull up over into, under the walkway and then back in. That, that, that would work.
I think that this area requires further attention.
No kidding.
If there's any, um, recommendation, I'm happy to pass.
Yeah, it can't go there. Can't be configured like that. I, I assume that, that the dri, the anticipated drive-through is where all those little cars are, right? So, so it, is it, the, the, the access to that drive-through is anticipated to be, uh, from the front around and then, or is it from the, the hotel?
I, I believe it's a mix. You could either come this way south along the hotel and come in here, or you could turn north and come in here.
Well, couldn't you come from the east as well?
Yes, you could make a right and then come, come down through this lane. I think that this also warrants some further consideration. It seems a little bit like a maze to, to get back here, and you don't want drivers confused when they're just trying to find their, their drive-through menu.
I think that, uh, instead of going all the way around and back, if, when they enter that site, if they made a right turn and that whole area be reconfigured so that the drive-through might be to the north side of that hotel, then they could just swing back around as you, as is configured now, how they would come in, but that would be an exit. And where that boulevard is, where you talked about bumping it out to reduce the amount of pavement, it's gonna need some kind of directional sign on, on where, because people are not gonna know where to go.
There's gonna have to be some signage directing people to the drive-through. And probably the best bet would be to direct them to go in front of the building instead of back around behind the hotel.
That's where I would set it. Yeah, exactly.
And then the one thing I think I would do is flat, is flatten out the radius when you first come in off of Beck Road and you go to make that right, right by where Laura's got the hand, is maybe flatten that radius out. And then as Laura was suggesting, you get the bump out on the other island, and it makes a much smoother, uh, traffic pattern when you do something like that. So in other words, right now, it's probably at a, like a 20-foot radius. Maybe you go to a 30-foot radius and it kind of flattens that out and makes just a little bit more room. And then you do the bulb out like Laura was talking about on the other island, and it would help to direct traffic much better than what you'd have. Because I could see that right now, if you were to do something like that, I could see potential problems with, um, cars colliding in that area, not understanding quite sure where they're gonna drive to.
And maybe by reconfiguring that whole approach, might resolve some of the loading zone issues. He'd have, has to work with that whole area.
Were there any other comments on the plans, reading through the report or taking a look at?
Just going back for a moment to, you, you don't have to bring it up necessarily, but the access, you know, to the Home Depot roadway there? I think I mentioned this at a previous meeting, where he has that, uh, road coming out, they store stuff back there. You see how, how it bumps closer to his property there, right where your cursor is? And, and going a little further, uh, east. I've noticed they put some lumber and stuff. We had approved some storage there, uh, for them. So he has to really get together with Home Depot and make sure that thing goes. Because I think that's gonna impact some of their storage. So what would you suggest? We're, we're gonna postpone this. What do you think, six months?
That's appropriate.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we postpone PC number 2274-0118 for up to six months, the September meeting.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to postpone application 2274-0118 to up to the September 2018 meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. And the last item for discussion is the recommendation to the Board of Trustees for, uh, the Plan Unit Development Zoning Ordinance. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Um, just, just for the commission's, um, information, this ordinance is slated to go before the Board of Trustees at their meeting next week. It's on the agenda just to kind of hear it as a study session. This is, um, this information is online. Uh, this is what was provided to the board. It goes through, um, the, each section and what the various amendments are. And then it contains a clean version of the draft, as well as the ordinance, as the current ordinance as it stands today. And there were a couple adjustments since your packets went out. This draft is dated March 20th. Because Kevin Bennett, the Township Attorney, did have a couple other, uh, recommendations to incorporate. And they are, um, minor. There are a couple formatting issues. There was some language that he recommended we use. It didn't change the intent of the ordinance in a couple sections. For instance, there's a part that talks about the natural assets and strands of trees. The one section that, that's probably the, the most substantial change is that, um, I guess in, in the last draft that we saw, the revised ordinance gave the applicant one year to submit the site plan, but then 18 months to actually submit the PUD contract to the Board of Trustees. So he was saying that he recommended that it just be one year all around. So one year instead of the 18 months for the contract, one year for the extensions by either the Board of Trustees or the Planning Commission. So that, um, that change was made. So it shortens it, but everything's uniform to one year now.
But that's it?
Yep. If you're satisfied with the ordinance, um, there were no other public comments received, um, to, to the township. The recommendation would be to, um, to recommend the amendments to the Board of Trustees for, uh, their review and consideration.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend, uh, the Article 23 PUD Ordinance Amendments, uh, to the Board of Trustees.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt.
As presented this evening. Because we have.
Yeah, we.
We had a few. Okay.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to recommend approval of the PUD amendment, uh, to the Board of Trustees. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then Laura, you have some communications, information items, that kind of thing?
Yes, I just wanted to let you know that, um, I did make those adjustments to the annual report, um, as we discussed. And I added in the information about the change in Planning Commission membership. In the last year, I added some highlights from 2017 and some site plans and renderings to give the board an idea of, of what we've worked on. And then I also added for the project status which projects in 2017 are open and, uh, closed. So this is available online, and if you'd like for me to send it out to you, I'm happy to do that as well. The Board of Trustees will be receiving that, um, for their meeting next week.
Yeah, can you email that to us?
Yeah, I'm happy to. And then as far as other, um, Planning Commission related activity, Monroe Bank and Trust submitted an A site plan, uh, to do a, a drive-through bank right next to the Grand Traverse Pie Company, right, right outside here of Township offices. And that whole development, I think as some of you will recall, is under consent judgment. And that specifically provides that, um, any new units to that development that are included in the consent, um, judgment go directly for an administrative review and not to the Planning Commission. So by default, Chairman Sobolski will be reviewing that, but it won't come before the, the Planning Commission. But I'll keep you, um, you know, abreast of what's going on with that development. The proposed building is small.
So is it in that parking lot that's to the west? Is that right?
Yep, that's the, the designated pad for unit five.
At least used parking lot.
And, uh, it's less than what they could build in terms of square footage, and I think that they're using the right materials. So, uh, I'll be, I'll be sure to update you on, on how that proceeds. In terms of other Planning Commission business, there was an email that was circulated, um, to the Executive, um, Planning Commission Committee that deals with the, uh, Greek Orthodox Church at Five in Hagerty. They would like, it's, it's this building, I'm sure. This is a, a really bad image when you get close, but the applicant had sent this along. But I'm sure we're all familiar with this site. And, um, they have a, a large lot. This is, this is their approved site plan, from I think 1990. And they have that festival, um, late summer every year, and they have a lot of equipment that they store for that. And in addition, they have some cooking equipment, like a walk-in cooler, industrial-sized equipment that they also use for that, that they'd like to keep on-site. And right now, there's really no facility to, for that storage. So they're proposing an accessory use, um, at one of several locations. And they wanted to take the commission's temperature on this. So this information was emailed out to the Chairman Sobolski, um, for consideration, and it was the recommendation that we bring it to the, to the full Planning Commission. So there's a couple spots that they are, um, proposing. One, one is down here, kind of in the, the southwest corner. Another is where the existing trailer that they have on the property is located. And just to kind of give you, um, an idea of, of the type of accessory building that they're looking for, this is the catalog that the individual provided me with. So, uh, some, a similar, a very similar type building to one of these. No, no one building in particular was selected.
How, how many buildings are they proposing, or just one?
Just one. I believe the dimensions are, um, I left my notes over there, but I believe it's 50 by 30, 52 by 30. So it's a, it's a larger accessory building.
But they would have cooling equipment in there.
It's a barn essentially.
It's, it's like, it's like a pole barn, yes.
Yeah. And it, and what, this was my comment. I don't know why, why you would wanna put a Quonset hut on the, on a, on a beautiful church site. That just, it just floors me. It, it's ugly from my perspective. And, and, uh, I think we should recommend or, or suggest to them that they, you know, do something that's a little more appropriate to the, the architecture that they, um, have in the other buildings. They have that garage, the one south and, and west, which, you know, looked to me to be in a pretty rough shape. And, and it seemed to me that you could do something there that looked somewhat similar to their, that's an educational center, that long building that's just north of it. You could do something there. Um, I don't object to the size of it necessarily, but more to the look. And the other suggestion I made was, if we allow them to do this, they gotta get rid of that trailer. This trailer that's over here on the southeast is where they store some of that stuff now. And it's just a unsightly mess.
You know, I think Northridge was dealing with an issue like this years ago, and they built a, you know, very nice garage building and outlot that doesn't look temporary and doesn't look like a, a shanty.
But it, it's, it's attractive looking.
It's masonry and it's a solid garage.
The other thing to consider here is, in this, um, area that's directly west, this large, you know, vegetated area, just right about down to here, these are two parcels that are under consent judgment as well. And there is a company who is aggressively looking at the site, and they've even submitted informal concepts, um, to the Planning Department at this point, just for feedback. So it is likely that at least there's two parcels here. Um, the line is kind of like right there. So whether they would develop the first front part or the back part, all these, all, all this vegetation would be removed, and this. this vegetation would be removed, and this might become more, this site might become more visible.
Visible, yeah.
Laura, who owns the property to the east? Do they own that big s- green area?
I believe it's Bosch.
Yeah, Bosch owns that.
Oh, Bosch owns that piece there?
Yeah.
Oh, that's, that's their driveway.
That's their driveway, yeah.
Yeah, I see it.
Do you know how close their garage is to the property line? That garage?
No, and I had the, the concepts that had been provided by the other applicant. I haven't been on a survey, but this might show. This is their approved plan. It's at least thirty-five feet. And then obviously, as you, as you go further south.
Right. And, and if you, you know, if you took that, you know, the, the square and moved it over and aligned it with the garage, then it would be away from that property.
So are we hearing that we don't like the Quonset hut approach?
Correct. You, you do?
No, I, I don't. I, I have a concern that, you know, they want to put a freezer in and everything in that building, and I'm...
You want something a little more permanent?
Right, if they're going to put that kind of equipment inside of it, they need to do something. And they do have a kitchen in the, uh, you know, in the church...
Correct.
...proper itself.
Yeah, is, is it on the ground floor?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't either. I've never been in the place, so...
You know, maybe they could put it there or put a small addition to the building. I mean, I don't know, they'd have to figure that piece out, how it would configure with them.
Okay, so is the direction, do I understand that the direction is, um, a, a, a more permanent structure, um, that would emulate the character of the existing buildings on-site? And, um, no, no walk-in cooler would be permitted?
No, I don't think there's an issue with the walk-in cooler.
No, I think if they put a masonry building up, you know, an attractive buil- not cinder block, something that, you know, is, is compatible with the existing buildings, as you said, um, and if they're going, they have to run power to it, you know, I would prefer to have it buried, not strung out, so it looks like some add-on.
As long as it's a permanent structure.
Right, a permanent...
Something in lieu of the trailer.
Yeah.
And the trailer's got to go.
The trailer's got to go.
Yeah, the trailer's got to go. So do, do we like the location, uh, where the trailer is for, for that kind of a structure, or what's your thinking on that? Where the trailer is?
I think the trailer is the, probably the one area where, because if you put it in the, on the westerly edge, like you said, that's where the, uh, the, the, the two consent properties are. I think you're better off, it's sheltered more where the trailer is. You've got that stand of trees right there. That would be, to me, the logical place for it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue with putting it where the trailer is, um, as long as it's, doesn't look like a Quonset hut.
It's actually closer to the, to the main building, so if they're doing festival work and bringing in supplies and all that stuff.
Accessibility.
Is this something that, if it were a permanent building, um, that the Planning Commission would want to see back before? Or would you want to treat it as opposed to administrative site plan?
Yes.
The applicant posed that question, so I wanted to get your feedback.
That's an additional cost for them?
Um, a, a slight increase in cost, um, but I think maybe more so the timing. We try really hard with the administrative site plans to do a two-week turnaround.
Yeah.
I forget when that, uh...
I think the festivals, like, in late August or early September.
It's Labor Day weekend.
Is it Labor Day week?
Yeah, I thought late summer sometime, I...
Yeah.
So they got plenty of time.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Anything else?
Could you explain a little bit about the Phoenix Yard and the letter and, uh...
Yes?
What it appears we have?
That was on my list. I'm glad that you brought that up. So as you recall, um, we, the Township formed the Subcommittee for the Phoenix Road Yard, um, site, which, um, I think everybody's aware of where we're at. Where Northville Road and Edward Hines intersect, and there's the Albert Con Building, um, and then M fourteen to the south. So this whole triangle piece, uh, Wayne County, um, has been in the process of, of accepting proposals and selling this land for redevelopment, and the Township has been involved, that Subcommittee was created, uh, the vision was drafted and, um, recommended by the Planning Commission, approved by the Board of Trustees. And the Wayne County has been narrowing down and whittling away at the number of proposals that they received. They received over thirty, which is, you know, amazing interest for the site. I mean, that's, that's really phenomenal. And they narrowed it down to the top five, and at that point, um, the Township was brought in, and we evaluated the five sites, um, with a number of different benchmarks, including, I think, job creation, um, price point, timeline, um, sort of community value, um, among other things. And the top, uh, two proposals were selected at that point, and they made presentations to the Township in Wayne County. And then, uh, a final and best offer was asked from both of those final two, and the final development, um, was selected by Wayne County, and that is Rick's, Rick Cox's team, and he does the Water Wheel Building in downtown Northville, if anyone's familiar with that. So he's well-versed in, um, Albert Con structures and historic rehabilitation, and that is one of the key, the key aspects of, of his and his team's proposal, is that they really want to, um, shed light on what happened, um, at this facility and why it's important. So they're really going to integrate that as part of their design. So for instance, you know, they, they haven't gone through the Township's approval process at this point, but their proposal to Wayne County, um, was that they're going to be having two different restaurants, one with banquet event space on the ground floor and sort of a walkout terrace. They're going to restore the building, they have the original blueprints already, um, and they're kind of going to give this, like, um, nod to what took place in that building. So for instance, in one of the restaurants, when you walk in, you'll walk by all this glass, and you're going to be able to see into the kitchen where everyone's actually, you know, working, just like the women on the line worked in, in those days, um, at the factory, and there's going to be sort of like a frosted, um, I don't know if it's montage, but images of what it really was like working there in that day. And they're going to be keeping some of the equipment and restoring it and kind of allowing that to be in the space so that you get a sense of that history. They are also proposing to, um, expand neat amenities to Hines Drive for residents who, and visitors who use the site for recreation, um, so especially along this area. They're going to be doing, um, kind of a garden, and they also hope to maybe do a kayak launch that is definitely in phase three of their project, and they'll have to see how that goes with, um, the Friends of the River Rouge, but, you know, they, they want to make this site, um, as open and inclusive to residents and visitors of Hines Drive as well. So we're quite excited about working with them in the process, and they'll likely be coming before, um, the Planning Commission soon and starting that approval process. It's not quite clear if they're going to be asking for, um, a rezoning or a PUD, um, but we'll explore those options with them, and they'll be presenting to you shortly, I'm sure.
How, how big is that site?
Um, I believe it's five thousand square feet, or nine thousand? Is that way, that's way too small, five thousand? Maybe it's nine thousand five on each floor.
Oh, no, I, I meant the, the property. What, how big is the property?
Oh, I'm sorry, five acres.
It's five acres.
Five acres.
Is there any current plan to either tear down or save the barns? And are there any outbuildings in the plan?
There are no permanent outbuildings in, in the plan, um, and the barns were not included with this. Um, there might be some environmental issues with them. They, environmental with the state is one of the first things that they are going to be going through the process with. And then kind of a viewing deck here with patio, and all of this would be, um, garden that would be open. So it's, it's really quite wonderful, and it's going to be a amazing destination for the Township and just change this area completely. They're also talking about doing some off-site impacts, so for instance, um, improving this intersection. Because this is a pretty isolated development.
But the, but the access would be from Hines Drive, I assume?
Yes, the access would be from either north or south, um, and they would be making parking lot and, and bridge improvement.
Right, right. I mean, they're not planning on any access from Northville Road.
That wouldn't make sense.
That would not be a good idea.
Now, traffic really backs up there during rush hour time.
Yeah.
It's just too bad that that waterfall is sort of hidden now. It used to be much more visible till they improved the bridge.
They talked about a deck overlooking the lake. What are they talking about? Where would that position be positioned?
Yes, they want to, um, expand the structure here to have a rather large viewing deck that would then, like, look right out into the lake and then go down into the garden. I know this doesn't look like a garden right now, but...
Not quite.
Something a little less than a garden.
I'll email out their proposal to you, so you can see their, their concept at this stage, and a little bit about, about, um, their team.
Yeah, I'd love to see that.
But I think it will be a very exciting and great project for us to work on.
That's very creative. I like that idea of the, the glass with the, sort of the frosted images of the women and, you know, overlooking, that's a great idea.
Yeah, they really want to tie in the history. They even talked about, um, when you're looking at the building, this, this part here, this, um, tower, that would be resorted back to, um, its glass, glass panes on all three sides there. And there used to be some type of mechanical equipment, um, that was very large, that was housed in here, and forgive me, because I'm really butchering that description, but they want, that mechanical equipment no longer exists in here, but it was an important part of their operations to run the factory. So what they want to do is they're almost going to, um, frost the glass as if you were looking in and you saw that equipment today. So they're really trying to tie in that historical touch.
They're lucky they have the original prints for that building, that they can...
That's something, isn't it?
Yeah.
I think that's it in terms of updates right now.
Anything from anyone else? You had a question about the Auto Zone sign?
Yeah, the Auto Zone sign, um, it just looked like the base was really high, and then the sign looks like a, just a block on top of the base, so just wanted to, I guess, verify that that's what we approved, that they built with, um, with the Township head of proof.
Okay. I will ask Kathy Pumphrey, the ordinance officer, to look into that, and I'll, I'll do a report back.
Thank you.
Sure.
What about the car wash? Do you have a, um, better understanding of when it starts? Are they waiting on anything from us?
They have not submitted final plans yet to us, so I believe they're still working out things with engineering and Wayne County. That process just takes a while. I did run into the architect at a social event, uh, like a month ago, and he said everything was fine, and that they are excited to be implemented, and that they enjoyed working with everybody. I think it's just sort of the engineering and, and stormwater that they're going through.
Any updates on that? I forgot the name of it, the development that is on Ann Arbor Road and Ridge across from Picnic Basket, they took down the trees. I know there were some issues there with wetlands, are they stymied or...
Andover Forest, that single-family development, yes, we get a lot of questions on that. They are still working, uh, with the state on that. They submitted some wetland mitigation that Dave Richmond and I reviewed, and, um, it was, it was all up to snuff, um, and we provided a letter from the Township saying that we, um, are fine with their adjustments to mitigate that wetland. They created some more, uh, an extension of their bioswale along Ann Arbor Road there, but we have not heard anything back yet.
Anything going on, um, Ned's other place for five mile and a...
They have not received, um, their permits from Wayne County, and until that happens, Dave Richmond and I have agreed that we won't sign off on that. He has submitted his plans for final stamp, and Chairman Sobolski did, um, review them for compliance.
Yeah, did Ned ever send you the scans of, of what we had approved, or at least can, can you reduce, I'd like to send that to the Commission so they can see it.
Yes. I will...
Just, just the, you know, not the lands, well, you, you know what sheet, I showed you what sheet that I thought was useful.
I will sum that out.
Yeah, okay.
Did you hear anything more from Picnic Basket wanting to, uh...
I have not. I heard they have one-ounce tastings.
Okay, if there's nothing else, is the...
I got another question. The one, the, the, um, development on the south side of Ann Arbor Trail, there's been no activity there for a very long time. Menards on the north side is doing a lot of work, but those folks aren't doing anything. What's going on there?
Leo Gonzalez's project?
Yeah.
I don't know what's holding them up. I thought that last year there was some holdup, um, because they were moving the dirt, but then they didn't think that they could get the utilities and the infrastructure on top at the same time before the weather set in, so they wanted to wait until spring to begin that process concurrently. But that is the last that I've heard. I'll ask the building department, because they would know better as to if they've submitted anything in there.
I haven't seen anybody there for a very long time.
They put a lot of dirt there.
Yeah.
Yeah, their soils weren't good.
Okay, are we ready for a mo...
I move we adjourn.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to adjourn the meeting at, uh, we'll call it eight, uh, fifty-three. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we adjourn.